This work session order. First up is Daniel.
Okay. Let me know if you can't hear me, okay? Can you hear me? What? Oh, Kristy's coming in, okay. I'll wait a minute, Kristi Marsh is coming in. Okay, so all council members got all of this information, a little, well, a little bit more in their packet, so they should all have that and they should have all read it and I could probably give them a quiz, but I thought it'd be helpful to go through it, because I invited the senior advisory committee members if they wanted to come, the providers like Kristi Marsh, and unfortunately, one of our committee members is not here because she is ill today, so. We have seventeen thousand two hundred and forty-five from the county that we can give out to senior services. Every municipality gets a different allocation, that's ours. So what we did with the senior advisory committee that I set up quite a while back, and I apologize for taking so long, it took me longer than I thought, but pulled together a great committee, you'll see their names farther down, and we just kept continuing to meet and deliberate, and so this is the product of a lot of deliberation by the committee. So it's based on a survey and proposals from three service providers. So we had, I would say approximately twelve meetings, and we also had meetings, we had the White Lake Community Ed, Tom Moore, Kristy from the Senior Center, and Age Well Services. Now, we did a survey that been out in the fall newsletter, went out online, we didn't get as many with that, but we got a big stack back, and we spent quite a bit of time pulling that survey together, it went out in November, and then we wanted to make sure that people had enough time. So just trying to ask people, you know, what they know and what they're thinking they want to have. So we collected feedback with the survey, we reviewed the proposals from the providers, we asked them to say, hey, what would you like to do and how much do you need for that? And then we, you know, did our assessment of the services and the money that we have. Whoops, how do I go back?
The next button up, the other button.
Okay.
If not, I can...
Okay, here's our committee members, Dick Connell's a former city council member, Ellie Dennis is here, a former council member, Tammy Stakowitz, Scott Brown currently on council, Mary Ann Walter, Connie Gafford, Bruce Skinner, and Virginia Demumbrom, former council member, also director of the White Lake Community Library. A good group of people. There we go. This is kind of small, and I apologize because I just couldn't make it work with the PowerPoint, but we aimed the survey towards city of Whitehall residents sixty or older, and we also said if you're a caregiver, you can fill it out too, because we want to know approximately... and this is just real general, anybody who wants the survey results, you're welcome to have them. About half knew that the city receives this allocation. Some of them knew about walking at the back and use it, although class offerings are somewhat limited there. What like Senior Center, it was a little bit more mixed, seniors used the facility, but an equal number said they'd like to know more about what it offers. And then there were other needs, like in health, like health screening support groups, things that would help them live independently, like snow shoveling, lawn care. It's, although that was interesting, because it was kind of equally split between people saying, ah, we don't really want this, and yeah, we do want it. So important to remember that this is not a statistically significant survey, but we got a stack, so people were very interested and provided their feedback. So what we are recommending is to continue allowing our seniors to walk free at the Viking Athletic Center. Forty-eight hundred dollars to the White Lake Senior Center, which would support their operations, trips and classes, which people said they wanted to do, to be social. And then, this is kind of exciting, they're going to do two community dinners for us just city of Whitehall, so, nobody else. I thought that's kind of cool. Even though they said, you know, they'd like to explore that, and then, you know, would we mind letting other residents come in, like for a cost, but this would be a free dinner for our residents two times, which is really neat. Age Well Services, we heard from them, and they do a lot of things in the county, and we reserved out a small amount of money for them to support Meals on Wheels, which is about thirteen eighty-five or eighty-six a meal, and Senior Transportation, which they said are big needs. It didn't come up as high on our survey, but they said that there's a lot of unmet needs, excuse me, unmet needs in our area, and so we also would like to start bringing them into the area to start putting some services on. And then City Communication, one of the things we found was that a lot of people just, they didn't know about the 2-1-1 number, or they didn't know about the services that are already happening, so we put money towards that.
Daniel?
Yes?
Do you know how many seniors we have in our community?
I have seen, when I looked at it, I was thinking approximately sixty-seven hundred, but I've seen...
Understanding that this is an issue.
What area were you considering then?
City of Whitehall.
No, sixty-seven hundred is more than our population.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, six...
City of White...
Six zero, seven zero approximately.
Okay.
Sorry.
Six hundred and seventy.
About that.
Okay.
But then I saw other people providing other quotes, so I wondered, I think there's different sources of where people get information.
So it's significant?
It is significant, yes, yes.
How many responded to the survey?
That's in your packet.
Ninety-six?
That's, yeah.
Ninety-one, that's almost a hundred, it looks like.
That's pretty good, yeah, that's pretty good. It seemed like, I mean, for the most part, we were told that that was a real good result, because most of the time, people don't fill out and return surveys. We didn't really get that money back from online. Bruce Skinner, who's not here, actually put all of them into an Excel sheet and then put it into a report for us that you have there. Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Of that, you have City Communication for a thousand dollars.
Yes.
Where does that money go and who controls that?
That would go to city staff, we originally had some more in there, mainly because we would like to have them have a section in the newsletter that's the senior, but we also want to kind of front-load it, so they're not out there, you know, trying to figure out what's going on and trying to put it into the newsletter, so we've got some ideas on how to make it such that the providers can contribute to that. One of my suggestions, and this is another reason for the money, is I'd like to see a webpage, a senior webpage, some municipalities have that, so if city staff is asked about services, they can, you know, say, hey, you know, check out our senior page, and then that page would link to Senior Center, Age Well, you know, the different entities, as well as the library, which Virginia's here. Did you want to, I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off.
Of the Age Well Services, is that twenty-four, forty-five, is that for meals for seniors in Whitehall?
Yes.
Just Whitehall?
Just Whitehall. Yeah, and it really, I mean, the need, I was told that their budget was just cut approximately two-hundred thousand dollars, so they are really scrambling, this is really a drop in the budget, but it helps, so.
I have a question, on each of these numbers, starting with the seventeen-two forty-five, is that the same as last year, or higher or lower?
I think last year, the Senior Center, it does change, I think the Senior Center got approximately thirty-five hundred, I mean, just to, and then twelve-five may have gone to Community Ed, so I think we got slightly more.
Last year it was fifteen-five or something like that.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Too bad we're not Fruitland Township, they get like thirty thousand.
Their population's greater and it's based on population.
Exactly, I know. That's true, that's true, that's why I keep talking about voting more housing, right?
Yes. I'm all for it.
Virginia, did you want to talk about this? This is what Virginia offered.
Which part?
Right here.
The digital classes?
Yes.
Yeah, that's in our strategic plan, anyway, it's something we already offered, we'll be happy to continue to do that, to partner more with Kristy and take it directly to seniors at the Senior Center, or even at the VAC, if that's where they want them, instead of coming to the library, so we can do that. And we're working on a couple of other things on that second bullet point, as far as providing ways that people can gather at the library, do things in a social way that can work on that isolation and loneliness. What else you got up there? Yeah, collaborate to expand the offerings.
And down at the bottom, just that you would like some help getting the information out.
Yeah, if that could go out in the quarterly with the water bills, for instance.
And if we have a webpage, it would be, you know, if we have a nice robust webpage describing everything that's offered, you know, that would be great, so that's another great resource.
Was there any thought or discussion about potentially providing transportation services for seniors in the community?
That's Age Well, Steve, it didn't come out as real high on our, it was one of the more moderate priorities that came back with the survey, but the folks from Age Well said non-medical transport, you know, appointments and things is a need, so that's why we've got them in there, but it's still a small amount.
I'm thinking just...
Oh, just regular?
Helping people get to the VAC.
Oh.
That would want to go to the VAC.
We could, we could, I...
I don't know.
We could, we could think about that, because I think I've asked the committee if they want to keep meeting. I mean, not like every week, but, because we are going to continue to look at some things. So, okay, let me see. And again, this is a little small, so the library, this was really cool, when we had the committee and we had the three entities in a meeting with us, at least some of them said, hey, this is a good idea, and Virginia said the library would be willing to host quarterly meetings of the providers. Yeah, yeah, but we can come too, right?
Possibly, some of the time.
What? And we talked about doing like an annual survey, just to check in, I'd like to see if the senior committee would like to continue to meet, because we were interested in trying to, you know, find some assistance for some of the home repairs along here. Some folks do that in the, with their millage funds, but that's something that takes a little more thought. And then, I know Virginia had mentioned, maybe, maybe we look at broader than the senior millage, maybe we look at a partnership with the VAC for more access to facilities, or to encourage them to do some additional programming. And then, this is cool, and I might even ask you to put this in the general budget, I was talking with Jeff Marcinkowski, the supervisor of Fruitland Township, about what they put their money to, and he's like, hey, city of Whitehall, do you want to split the Senior Palooza with us? It's a very, very popular, very cool event where they have a community dinner, all these entities come in and have booths and things, and it would make sense for us, I think, to collaborate with them.
I'd rather see a percentage on it than split.
Yes.
They get a lot more money than we do.
Based on population.
Based on population, absolutely.
I think we could work that out. Yes. But that was kind of, we've had a lot of good synchronicity, I think.
Anytime we can work with any of the surrounding municipalities is a good thing.
Well, and I also, I don't know, Virginia, I don't know who it was that said, it might have been you, that if every municipality did a Senior Palooza, you would exhaust the people who have to show up.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. So, anyway, so when we get to voting, this is what we're asking you to vote on, nine for the VAC, Community Ed, four-eight for the Senior Center, a thousand to the city, two-four-four-five for Age Well, and then, these are just things that you don't, I don't think we have to vote on, but, you know, we would like to kind of meet quarterly and then continue to explore, you know, additional funding. We could, we could actually, Scott, I think you looked into that, the additional grant opportunities?
Yeah, I got ahold of some people down in Muskegon, and it seems like there are additional grants above the, you know, what you get, each municipality gets for their allotment, that you could possibly apply for, but the way their system's set up is the grants are on a three-year program. And right now, they're in the middle of the three-year grant program, so they added my email address to their, you know, list, and whenever information becomes, starts becoming available late this fall, or whatever, they will inform me, and I'll pass the information on to whoever it needs to get to.
Well, you're just going to stay on the committee, aren't you?
We'll see. Depends on what time of year it is and how, you know, my availability, so.
Well, yeah, and I think, I also heard that those grants are pretty competitive, too, they're aimed at specific goal-oriented, on the other hand, they're available to us, and so we, you know, if we could look into additional partnerships, more grant funding, because seventeen-two-four-five is not a lot of money, but I do want you to know that this was a, we had a lot of deliberations, didn't we? And I kept coming back and saying, you all sat with this, and then once in a while, we had a little change here or there, but this was, this is a, everybody on the committee agreed, that was, that was my goal.
I have a question on something that's not mentioned anywhere, and that is the senior sneakers program, how many people have that, and, you know, would that affect us in any way, or?
That's, that's a good point, Tom. We had asked about that, and I'm not quite sure, I'm not sure it was being tracked, but I did just get information on it, but too late to get into the report. But Silver Sneakers, or I think it's being called One Path now, we do, I think we have maybe around, if I'm remembering correctly, seventy seniors that used that at the VAC.
But it's not just the VAC either, you can use it at the health club up the street, things, I mean, I don't know anything about that, I know that my wife and I are qualified, we don't use it, does everybody get that? I don't, everybody on Social Security, or?
No, that's, that seems to be more a Medicare Advantage, I'll chat with you after, because you can go to the Neil Fitness Center with a pool for me.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, well, if your Medicare Advantage plan, you know, has that, so. Ellie, or Virginia, or Scott, did you want to add to this?
Nope, I don't have anything to add.
Was there any thought of what it would take to allow every citizen of Whitehall to use the VAC?
Every senior, you mean?
No.
Every citizen?
Every citizen.
No, we didn't look at, we're looking at seniors. We could, yeah.
Virginia, you want to?
That was kind of Virginia's idea.
I just suggested it, and I did talk to, hang on, I didn't come to you, Tom and CJ at Rotary at lunch today, just had a casual conversation, and they would be interested in pursuing it, they would need a little bit of time to figure out what that number would be. It wouldn't be the ten, it would need to be more than the ten that they proposed, but they would be all for that, they would.
In our budget talks, I think it's something that we should talk about, we should look at, is being able to provide something for all our citizens.
I do think I'd like to see them provide some additional programming, as well as the walking too, so, but yeah, it was, I just want to have thanks to the senior advisory committee, to the Community Ed, the Senior Center, Age Well, I thought it was good work. It took longer, that was on me, but I think it's good work, and I don't know, I know, Kristy, did you, is this the time that Kristy could say a few words about her organization?
Yes, of course.
If she wanted to.
I'm Kristy Marsh, I'm the director at the White Lake Senior Center, our building is located in Montague, but we do have support from typically ten surrounding municipalities, there's the five or six that are very active there. In the years past, we've had donations from each of those, just for general funding, with the additional senior millage, we've been able to offer some more things, the classes and those type of things. In the meeting, we decided to try a community dinner, decided just to do two a year, see how it goes, and hopefully that'll, I think it'd be very successful, they love to come together for food, so I think that would be a good thing. I appreciate everything you guys do, even probably the most loyal supporters of the center, really appreciate you guys. Any questions I can answer?
Are they coming with the building issues that they have, that you have? I know there's issues with the front door, and I've heard issues of, I guess, the south wall or west wall.
Yeah, there's some foundation, the roof leaking, there's something that in the long term are going to have to be fixed. The front doors are going to have to be fixed sooner, because we're using a bike lock right now to keep those front doors locked, so that's going to have to be done sooner than later. So yes, our board president is working with city of Whitehall to kind of put together a conversation to go out and outreach in the community, not just in, you know, the boards, but the whole community, and see what kind of support they can get. That cost is going to be probably, the one estimate that they got for the wall was sixty-nine thousand dollars, the door is going to be five at least, and then they have to hire consumer, they have to hire an electrician to remove electricity, consumers won't do that, so altogether, they're going to be close to, you know, eighty, ninety thousand dollars, if they don't just put a Band-Aid on it and fix it properly.
You want to have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time, Tom, you did a great job, the community, it was wonderful.
I really, I really appreciated it, like I said, it was on me, it seemed to lag a little bit, but I think we learned a lot, and we know we've got some ideas even for next year to explore, so. The work of the committee was good, though, they were not just to show up and, they did the work, so, thank you very much. Oh.
Comments, anyone? Very well done.
Thank you.
Good job. Good job, I gotta say, I'm dismayed at the amount of participation in the survey, I mean, you had six-hundred-and-seventy approximately seniors, and less than a hundred have stepped forward.
I know what to say, although it was like a stack like this, and we were told by, we were told by people in the know that, like, that was good.
It's probably about the same kind of a percentage you get from a regular election, you know? Like around maybe fifteen to twenty percent, and that's, that's what you, you know, you get for everything all the time.
It's just, I find it difficult to base policies on tiny, tiny portion, I know we did that with the city's master plan, we had the same kind of situation with low turnout.
Well, we could, we could probably do it again, too, if we wanted to check back, and decisions are made by people who show up and do surveys.
And I do support the recommendations. You've done a good job putting this together, and it's very helpful for everybody to understand the situation.
Well, if anybody wants, you know, the full report, I can, you know, let me know and I can provide that to you, because this was, this was a little condensed.
You know, the 2-1-1 service is something that I wish we could do a much better job at getting that information out there, because that is a really good service that I think people don't understand, or are not even aware that it exists.
Well, and you're right, and that, that did come up, I think Virginia, I was glad you brought that up, and maybe Ellie too, but that's going to be one of the things that we suggest to city, excuse me, to city staff, you know, and, and maybe we will even sit down with city staff and come up with some ideas that make sense, you know, for, that was one of the top things that we realized, is that way more outreach is needed, the organizations already do it, but we need to, we need to add to that, amplify it.
Would some of that thousand dollars be earmarked for that type of?
Oh, exactly, yes.
That's a good thing.
I just, I really like the idea of the committee continuing, I mean, I know it's probably, you probably need a break, I know it's pretty intense, but I like the idea of it continuing, and you can always reevaluate, I know you mentioned that there were some, there was some input around like needing handyman work and yard care and things like that, I think that's a, that's an important one, and maybe there's an opportunity to do some volunteer groups with more planning and more input, and so I like the idea of it, of keeping an eye on where we are and going forward, so, thanks again to all the committee in putting it together.
I think we, we wanted to look at that, but I don't think we came on to the folks who were, the better ideas until we were far enough down the line that it would have taken us more time and more research to be able to pull together something in that area, but it's on our list.
Yeah, and you made a big, you kind of the top priority first, and that's a great place to start, so, yeah, it's great.
You have a group together that is already focused on senior services, and maybe some of those people would be willing to stay working together for those kind of issues?
Well, I certainly hope so, I was very pleased with, with everybody, everybody showed up with ideas, and there were back and forth emails, I don't know, how many do you think, Ellie?
Too many.
Well, I was just trying to get you to answer, like, come on, because I did want it to be a committee recommendation, so, but ideally, yeah, and then certainly more people can join the committee if they feel that, you know, they want to participate, and you don't have to be a senior either, so.
Just to get the word out that you're looking at that kind of situation, how can we better serve the citizens of this community, not just seniors?
Well, that's something to think about, I think, although I want to backtrack, one, we did get some questions from people in a couple other municipalities saying, whoa, we love your survey, could we use it and tailor it to our needs, so we're probably going to start, you know, share that with other folks.
That's great. Any more on this issue? All right, we'll move up to the next one, Search Consultant.
You know, we could, we can, this one seems to suit us the best, you know, but, you know, that's, that would take time to gun us ourselves.
Counsel, did you, did you look at these, anything red flags?
No, I think they, one thing I always look for in these is if you're not happy, can you terminate them after a month if you don't like them, and they all provide, that you can do that, and unless it's for cause, you pay them for what they've done, but you're not stuck with them, so, that's always a power you want to have in something like these. What they do, they all offer sort of slightly different menus of options, and I know one of them that I saw that was interesting, and might be worth considering, is, I think it was in the Double Hall, it was on compensation benchmarking, of figuring out how you want to, you know, where you've had somebody for a long time, that might be an interesting service to avail yourselves on, so I don't know if you haven't had that.
I asked one of the ladies that I talked to about that, and she said Double Hall basically uses the same information as MML uses, so you can probably get the same information from those two companies. In one instance that one of them spoke about... It, one instance that one of them spoke about is they had agreed on the compensation package. And when it came down to the end, the city said, well, we don't wanna pay that much after all. And that's, that's a pretty big hiccup to overcome at that point, you know, you lose trust and everything else. One thing I would say, too, about, it's, I don't think it's on the lifeline that you're gonna want to have recruiter come back again to do some aftercare work, and they all provide for that to some degree. But the one in Tex, you know, if, the one in Texas, you'd be paying airfare, hotel, and meals, and so on, as opposed to one of the others, you'd be paying somebody to drive across the state or drive from Lansing. It'd be a lot less money for something like that.
Unless they're remote.
I was wondering, it's, it's recommended on here that we pick one of these by March 25. Now, is that something we need to do, or do we have longer than that? Sounds like everybody wants to look at these some more.
Well, it's, normally it's about a twelve-week process, so that would be four months out, so.
Yeah.
That's getting to be kind of close, but I think that would be fine. I don't think you're, yeah, you're probably not gonna go much beyond that.
Wonderful.
Said sixteen weeks.
Yeah.
I also wondered, how did Montague pick their city manager? Did they go through one of these, or, because he was local, when he was chosen as their city manager?
He was the assistant first.
Well, he was the assistant, but he also, he was on council. Steve, he was a council member, and, yes, he was, yeah. He was a council member, and then he just slipped over to assistant manager, and then was preparing for when John French was gonna retire.
We don't have an assistant manager.
So, so the next meeting's the 25th, so we should be good if we do it by then.
Yeah, that's, that's what it's recommending on here.
Two weeks I should be able to get to the rest. All right, we're getting close. We need to open this up for public comment, so if there's anyone wants to step up, give your name, give your name, give your comment.
Hi, my name's Wiley Frye. I live over in Montague, and I'm one of the community organizers with Montague Commoners. We do the community sugar bush this time of year, and I know there have been some concerns about tapping here in Whitehall. First off, I just wanted to clarify, I'm not tapping anything over here, sap is heavy. And I'm not dragging it all the way over to Montague. But also, I just wanted to offer myself as somebody who knows a decent amount about maple tapping and about how it affects tree health. If any of you guys wanna talk to me after the meeting, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you.
Fall Barnes, King Street, Whitehall. Thank you, Deb, for clarifying that the public had been in the process of getting a manager. Senior Millage, if you are concerned about the seniors, please don't take our leaf pickup away twice a year because they all don't come down, so please don't do that.
We own the trucks.
Huh?
We own the trucks now, so.
Okay.
It's not going away.
It's not going away.
Okay, and then the other thing is, we're all getting older. I'm a senior. I was here when, oh, when McCarthy, Chief McCarthy, had the proposal about a new ambulance, you know. Please, please consider that. Our neighbor fell in the winter, and she fell outside, and it was, I know it was over twenty minutes. And sure, fire rescue does a good job, but they can, they're only limited on so much. So please consider an ambulance service that's not twenty minutes away. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm Frank Hollister. I live on Miras Avenue. I have three points I'd like to keep in front of you for consideration. First is handicap access, particularly, I've mentioned this before to you, and thank you for past work in getting the disability network up here to assess the city properties to make sure that they're compliant with ADA and with Michigan law. As far as I know, however, the three motels that are in town are still are not accessible. The Maple Tree, White Lake cottages, and Lakeland Inn, I believe. I believe none of them have any accessible rooms. I wonder if there's something that you can do to persuade them that they need to come into the 21st century before we get into the 22nd century. That would be helpful. Second thing would be thinking about the tightness of rentals around here. Have you considered changing some zoning to make multifamily situations more accessible, more available? Because there is certainly a shortage of housing, driving up prices. I handle some rentals myself, and I'm surprised at how much I can charge because the market is so tight. The third thing would be, I'll also be discussing this with the Board of Appeals tomorrow. For several years, my property on Miras has been under assessed, and most taxpayers don't wanna complain about it being under assessed, of course, because the more you're assessed, particularly the taxable value, the higher that is, the more taxes you pay. But I think that we, as a city, are losing out on lots of funds. If my house is an example of many houses in the area, particularly those maybe that have been purchased recently, if they're under assessed, then senior millage is not coming in as much because lower, lower numbers. The city is not getting its funds, the veterans, et cetera, et cetera. But I don't know what you can do about that being under assessed. But it certainly looks from my experience, being forty years in the real estate business with Jeff's father, it looks to me like there are a lot of properties that are under assessed and we're missing out on the money. Or perhaps if the assessments were raised to a proper level, maybe the taxes could be cut, and you'd still be having more funds to deal with. Thanks for serving, and thanks for listening.
Thank you. Yes.
Can I help you, Lyndon, Frye?
Yes.
Last year, I asked if we would look at some affordable housing, I don't know if councilor members, and the first step is a land inventory, and our city manager did a land inventory looking at different properties that could be suitable for, you know, co-housing or different things. And we put that on hold because the county was high, was gonna hire a housing coordinator because the whole county is suffering from lack of affordable, well, housing in general. And the next step that we, that I had asked for is, could we bring that housing coordinator here to talk about partnering? Because the county will, will be partnering with municipalities that want to partner on housing. So the person was hired, and as soon as they're there for a couple weeks, I think we have first dibs. So you might wanna, if we bring her in, you know, come and hear what she has to say.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'd like that.
Okay, with that, we're adjourned. All right, first up is approval of the agenda. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved in second in any discussion. All right, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those who say no, we have one agenda. Next is the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda for March 11, 2025.
Second.
Second, so any discussion?
I have a couple of questions, I'm not sure if maybe Brenda can answer, since Scott's not here.
Yeah, he should be here shortly, though, I'll do my best.
There were two letters, you know, from communications from some citizens. And I just wanted to know of the one from Alice Frazell, was forwarded to the Playhouse Committee?
Yes, it was forwarded to Beth, and Beth has reached out to her.
Okay, and the other one from June Almond, was that problem resolved?
That problem will be resolved with action by you, so it will be up to you to decide if the late fee would get waived or not for that. We didn't receive the check, but she did claim that she sent it, so.
So it hasn't turned up or?
It has not turned up, so it would be by action by you if you wanted to waive that late fee for her. If you don't take action, then she would need to pay it.
Anyone else? All those in favor of the consent agenda say yes?
Yes.
Those who say no? Consent agenda. Next up, messages. Steve, start us off.
Oh, you were looking over there, I thought. I, I hear this talk about affordable housing a lot, and I'd like a definition of affordable housing. I don't know if we're talking about building affordable housing. Who's gonna build it? Is it rentals? Is it affordable homes that people buy? I don't understand this whole concept, because I don't know if you can build something affordable, and if people pay more for it than what you think is affordable, it's not affordable anymore. So I don't understand this concept, unless it's like the apartments out here or something like that. Is that affordable housing? I don't understand. So if anybody could explain that to me, I'd appreciate it.
Well, we, we had it on a work session, Steve, and we can put it, we can put it on again so we don't take up time here, or I can catch you after the meeting.
How much is affordable?
It, it is kind of a catchphrase. I guess it relates to the fact that we had that study from the county that talked about, you know, the lack of housing, and the term is affordable housing, but, you know, some people think of affordable housing as income-based. I'm just looking at, in today's market, do we have the ability to provide homes for people that they can buy?
Who provides it?
It's, it's, I'm not saying us. When we looked at it, we looked, we had a land inventory that showed different properties that might work. This could be like a co-housing for seniors, and maybe this would be a duplex. It would be mostly private, I think, but the county is looking to partner with the municipalities. I think True North in New Ego works with the municipalities, so I, there's a variety of ways of doing it. I'm not talking about our city doing it.
I just never understood at that time, or now, what is affordable. I mean, somebody might think that two-dollar gas is affordable, and somebody else might think that five-dollar gas is affordable. I mean, it's all a matter of, so I don't understand this thing. Anyway, that's, that's, that's the only thing I can think of talking about tonight, it just kinda makes me wonder.
Steve, that new subdivision that's going in up across from Shelby High School is supposed to be an affordable, that's the term they use for that, and I wanna say, I thought those houses started at a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. cheapest one was two nineteen. Was it two nine tax? I knew somebody talked about it, it was you that talked about it.
Two nineteen, two thirty-nine, and I think it was two forty-nine.
And those were subsidized, too, weren't they a little bit? They got a grant for those or something for infrastructure or something?
Peterson Farms is paying for a lot of that.
Yeah, so.
Paying for a lot of the infrastructure.
So it gets probably affordable for people who work at Peterson Farms. Maybe.
Yeah, I think affordable housing is, it's different for every different person.
Yeah.
And every different location, too, because, yeah, house here versus house.
I didn't mean to get off on a whole thing here, but I'm confused about this, so.
I'll use the term housing from now on, house app.
Okay.
Scott?
Another one for Brenda, I guess. Can, can you confirm that April 13th through the 27th, I think it is, is leaf pickup for the spring?
I thought it was the 15th. We just put a Facebook post up either yesterday or today. There is a rumor out there that there wasn't.
Yeah, well, that's why I wanted to confirm it, because there's been some stuff on social media that they weren't doing a spring cleanup.
No, we are, we are doing leaf pickup. It starts mid-April, I think it's April 15th, for two weeks through the end of April, and then we'll pick up with brush, pick up right after that.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that, so, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Just to slow it all down, so, nothing coming, sir.
I'd just like to compliment whoever brought the sunshine. That's all I got.
Well, I would like to compliment you, Tom, for taking the initiative to contact the municipalities that you did for the city manager search. That's a, those are good, that's good data to have, it will help all of us. I mean, I know I've kind of landed where I landed, but I know others are still working through it, so hopefully it's good data for them as well. On a, on a completely separate note, I need to be out of town for the week of the May, last meeting in May, second meeting in May, so I respectfully request an excused absence for that date.
So moved.
Second, May 27th.
Thank you.
All those in support? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all I have.
I have two things that are related to my work. I work for West Michigan Environmental Action Council, an organization that's been in Grand Rapids for decades. I work remotely in my home up and down the lake shore. There's two things that I wanted to mention to council and anybody in the public. One is I am working with Dr. Rick Radeski, scientist that was very involved with me in cleaning up White Lake and things. But he's very well-known for being involved in the PFOS issues over at Rockford, and he and I are setting up a Muskegon County PFOS task force because if you understand that Muskegon County is like the most industrialized county along the lake shore, we also have the most PFOS sites. We have eighteen, and so we are setting up a task force, kind of like when we had the White Lake Public Advisory Council, with the idea that maybe if, if we do it, and we do it kind of the way that we did the Public Advisory Council, make sure that, you know, as a representative of the community, that, you know, after we get up and going, the state will say, gosh, you guys have a whole lot for your county, and give us some additional funding to, to keep it going. Our goal is to protect public health. We wanna make sure that all of the, the sites are contained such that nobody's exposed to PFOS, and also if there are things that need to be done with those sites, like, you know, additional investigations. It's not that we don't trust our state environmental agencies or county, but we have learned that it helps to have that local citizen resident involvement. So we're having a meeting in person, March 27th, at the Grand Valley State University Ennis Water Resources Institute. We're inviting all of the municipalities that have a site, and then different interest groups, Sierra Club, Conservation District, things like that, so, if you're interested. It's, it's a, it's a big issue. And then last of all, I've been working on recycling for four years. Our, working to improve recycling, and we're having a virtual meeting, I'm holding a virtual meeting next week. And the cool thing about it is we, we've been able to develop with the folks we're working with a public education plan. We don't have any, we don't have any consistent county-wide education on recycling. And so we've developed tools that any school, municipality, company can grab. And so we've developed tools that any school, municipality, company can grab and put on their webpage, do a digital, put out on Facebook, you know, why recycle, how recycle? And then we have updated information on all of the county as far as where you can recycle, where you have private facilities. So that's really cool. And it's, and after that, I'm going to be done with recycling for a little while. But that is also open to members of the public, March 20th, and it's virtual. And I'm hoping, Scott, that I'm going to give you this public education stuff and you can do something with it, put it on the website, I don't know.
Okay.
It looks good.
Scott, you're next.
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Can I, can I say something?
Oh, however, can I defer to Brenda?
Something exciting just launched today on our website, you'll see it. Our ACH Ability to Pay Your Water Bills. Yes, automatically recurring directly out of your savings or your checking account. You just have to fill out a form. It's free, so there's no added charges. So we have forms available on our website and we'll have them at our window too. So that just launched today, we're, we're able to get that going, so. Free new service.
Wonderful news. I'm sure many of our residents will be happy to hear that.
I'm already signed up. I was thinking.
All right, for myself, at the last meeting, if you all recall, we received an invite from the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative to, to become a member, which we did become a member at their, at their cost. They're paying the cost for us to be a member of that organization. They're a nonprofit organization whose focus is on restoration of the Great Lakes ecosystems and preserving control of the Great Lakes. They also invited me to attend their Washington DC Water Day last week, which I did. I spent three days in Washington DC. Many, many meetings with congressmen, senators. It was a whirlwind of meetings and overs and lunches and dinners. It was a great experience. Wonderful organization. You might figure that there was a lot of talk about the trade tariffs because this was attended by over 30 mayors from the Great Lakes and Canadian. That was certainly high on the Canadian mayor's interest. But it was a wonderful experience. Next, we'll move on to public comment. Yes?
My name is Steve Seer and Muskegon County Commissioner for District One, which includes White Hall. Just a couple of items. Affordable housing, interesting concept. We were told, I'm part of the Land Bank Board, and Land Bank Board has been working on housing for quite some time. One of the things they have done recently is hooked up with some contractors who are coming in and infilling in the city of Muskegon, building affordable housing there. So we went and toured one of the houses that, that they had built, actually was a couple of them, in an area. And so what was the affordable, the rental on that house was $1,700 a month. So I thought, so affordable housing is relative, folks.
Yeah.
Second item, I'm also on the ASAT Board, which is the governing board for West Michigan Works. West Michigan Works has, they deal with employers and employees trying to match the two up together, people looking for jobs and people needing, employers needing people. They have a weekly hot jobs list. I printed one out here, this is for Muskegon County. There's 77 jobs available on this list. And the range of jobs on this list are everywhere from entry-type jobs at maybe a Walmart or a food service organization, all the way to AeroTech, GE Aerospace, and Homet. There's a lot of different jobs on here, a lot of them available, a lot of different skill sets. So one of the things that West Michigan Works does is if you contact them and you're looking for work, they'll sit down and walk, walk you through a process where they see who you are, where you might fit, and if there's, if there's some deficits and, you know, maybe you need a driver's license or whatever it might be. I mean, if you can't read, I mean, there's things that they'll do to help to train you or get you the, the resources you need so that you're employable. So it's a great organization. You can go on westmichiganworks.orgs and if you hit Weekly Hot Jobs List, if you Google that, this jobs list will come up. It's a weekly thing. And it's, it's not just in Muskegon County, there's, I think, six or seven counties that are included there. So I'll just leave this, you guys can take a look at that, that's the ones that I printed out, so.
Is the city manager for White Hall on there?
Thank you.
He may be looking at that list.
Anyone else for public comment?
I guess. Sorry. I may have missed this, this, I'm Stephen Crooks, owner of Water Dog Upfitters. I may have missed the work session public comment, but, and this might be where I need to bring this up, I'm not quite sure. So first of all, you can thank me, I brought the sun back from Florida. I came back Saturday. The affordable housing comments and whatnot, I have a really good example of it because I purchased a house in White Hall in 2014, spent $58,000 on a 700 square foot house. Went back to that same house because I moved back to this area this year, $175,000 for the same house. Not updated, not, not current carpet, not granite countertops, same exact home. I moved to this area because it was affordable, it was on the lake shore, and it was absolutely beautiful, I absolutely loved it. Nothing's, you know, owning a small business, nothing is feasible with my income. I can't afford to buy a house here. I'm renting out of town now. So when I say, when people say affordable housing, that's a good example. There has to be options because if there's not, this town's going to die. People are not moving here, you know, the, the Tannerian Bay's great, and that's bringing in a lot of income to the city and bringing in a lot of seasonal people, but we need more than 60% rentals. I went to rent a place and I talked to a gentleman. I said, well, how much can I rent that for in the off-season just because I'm looking for a place seasonally, just to get, kind of get back in the area? He's like, $2,200 a month. Why am I going to lower that when I can get that all season long? Airbnbs and VRBOs are killing the rental industry. And it's, and it's happening here. You're not getting new people because nobody can afford it. So just, just my opinion. But three other things, just super quick. One's a public safety concern. It has to do with the crosswalk between Water Dog and Napa. I've heard a lot of people say that's MDOT's kind of domain, and I've heard some people say that it's the city's domain. I feel whoever it is, the city needs to take this kind of challenge on and get a flashing yield sign put in the middle of that street. I have seen, I can't, I could say dozens of examples of children, parents, almost getting hit. That curve and that hill is a drag strip. And if people don't see a flashing yield sign, they blow right through it. And I see squealing tires and people screaming and rude drivers flipping people off and honking their horns at people using the crosswalk. So there's lack of, lack of knowledge on how a crosswalk works around here, and it's, it's getting really dangerous. So I don't know if I want to put that on you guys, if you want to try to look into this and see who can be responsible for it, but it is definitely necessary, something that needs to be done there, so. Low water issue, and this is, again, this is, this has to do with me and my business. If, I'm sure everybody's noticed, the water dropped probably 18, if not 24 inches this last winter. The dock water at the kayak launch is three inches. There is no water. So as a business, I'm trying to figure out now how to launch my kayaks. I can't launch them in three inches of water. I'm kind of requesting ideas, how I can get my yaxi, my golf cart taxi, down to the boat launch on the river? If I can cut through the Chamber of Commerce and up over the bike path and on the grass and take that to the parking lot? Or if I can take it on the road and get down to the, get down to the boat launch? Seems to be about the only option unless I cross at the crosswalk and go to Goodrich Park. So I'm open to ideas on how I can do that without losing $30,000 in rental business. I talked to the chamber and Stephanie also agrees because she has many people that come in requesting to rent kayaks because they don't bring all of their goods with them when they're on vacation. So I'll leave that and see what happens. Third and last, really quick, Water Dog wants to give back to the bike trail. And this is kind of a permission or what do I need to do? I don't know if you've heard of Harvest Host or Hot Shower? These are two apps that people can kind of link into, and they can stay overnight at a brewery or a farm or anything like that, and it's free of charge. They just, you know, ask that you patron the surrounding businesses and whatnot. So Water Dog would like to put a overnight accommodation shed type situation up above the pond for the bikers. So it would be something bike-specific where instead of these bikers, you know, heading out within a couple of miles, heading out of town and spending their money elsewhere, we can capture them, get them here in town, stay the evening for free, start spending money at the local establishments, doing it as a, just as a courtesy. Because we're right on the bike and bike path, and we have dozens, if not hundreds, of bikers that go by us every season that are coming from Chicago and coming up from, you know, or down from Traverse City. So I don't know if I'm asking for, for permission or if I need to because it's, it's not a permanent structure, it's simply a shed that's going to be on, you know, leveled and steps. But it's something we want to do to kind of give back to the biking community that rides through the area, so.
I'm guessing that's the conversation you need to have with our zoning administrator.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
All right.
Is there still a kayak launch at Marina?
Yes.
It was on?
Yeah, there's a. The same one that's at Lyons Park that is apparently.
I knew there was one there years ago, but I didn't know, you know, and I know you don't want to get killed going across the street, so, but, you know, there's something over there. I would assume the water's deeper over there.
At the Marina?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've discussed if we can even use Goodrich Park because that's a deep-water port, or used to be a deep-water port right there. Maybe there's a way we could utilize that, but again, it would be a safety issue crossing that road. Yeah.
All right. Is there any further public comment? You mean none? I don't believe we have any old business.
Oh. I would say this is old business. I, I would like to make a motion that we forgive this interest payment by what was asked about in the.
All the late payment.
The letter, yeah. I mean, pay the bill, but, but I think we can forgive the.
June Alman?
The interest or the.
Late fee?
Late fee, that's it. I would like to make a motion that.
What, what are we talking?
$30. Up near $30. I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I guess that's old business, isn't it?
You can pass the, the new app on to her, right?
Yeah.
Is this an appropriate time for this? I think so.
Yeah, you can do that.
All right, we have a motion in second. I think we should have a roll call because it's to do with dollars.
Sure. Sigenka?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Zimmer?
Yes.
Philbrand?
Yes.
Kabala?
Yes.
And Salter?
Yes.
All right. Now we're on to new business, Resolution 2508 Sidewalk Bids.
I'll move Resolution 2508 to 2025 sidewalk bids not to exceed $90,000.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I would like to see this somehow redone to where the stuff for the sidewalk from G Park down to the lake is separated from the rest of the stuff in the city? Or is it pretty much that way right now?
By separating, you mean we no longer have ownership?
No.
As a separate bid?
Yeah, separate bid.
We had gotten an estimate from JACO, and off the top of my head, I believe, complete reconstruction was like $26,000. And then the, just the stairs with crushing, the current concrete using the stones and vines, if you will, was about $5,000 or $6,000. But what we did is we put this in with the bid in hopes that economies of scale would be favorable. We were shocked at the bids that came in. It almost doubled the cost from just last summer. So we're not really sure. KNR did all the work last summer, they did a great job. They're a huge company, but they do have a separate concrete branch. So it's not like, you know, they're coming off a $20 million project to do this. Yeah, I, I don't know if we're going to get any better bids, if we pull this away. But again, this work is probably only going to be about $5,000 of the $90,000. We did not itemize it that way, we just grouped everything together.
Okay. All right.
Did they say what the cost, that you probably didn't ask, what is it, concrete cost? Probably both, labor and concrete?
Um, we could, I think it's, it was 2,750 linear feet. So don't ask me to do the math right now.
Thirty of them on?
Five thousand. Yeah. So it was, we've been used to $25 a linear foot, and I think this is $50 to $60 is what the bids came in.
Concrete and all that, and people are building again, so.
All right. Is there any further discussion on this? Roll call please.
Holmstrom?
Yes.
Philbrand?
Yes.
Kabala?
Yes.
Sigenka?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Zimmer?
Yes.
Salter?
Yes.
Resolution 2508 is approved. Next up is public comment. Anyone wishing to make a comment? Doesn't appear as though we have any students in the room. You hear nothing? All right, we're adjourned.